Viva, are you ready?
Yeah, you're recording. This is the top.
Everybody ready? Okay, let's. All right, here we go. The June 11th, 2025 meeting of the Rockbridge County Planning Commission is called to order. Roll call, Commissioner Member Sabrezi.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Member Sandridge.
Here.
Commissioner Member Whitmore is absent. Commissioner Member Beebe is here. In addition to citizens attending the meeting in person, citizens have several options to view or participate in the Zoom meeting webinar as described below. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Zoom webinar, the link is available on the county website to copy into the address line on your browser. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you are calling in by telephone. This time, we will proceed with the meeting. Citizens comment period, is there anyone physically present to speak? Not on these two items, but on anything? We have nobody here. Is there anybody via Zoom or by phone? Okay. Gentlemen, you've all looked at the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the meeting moment, uh, May meeting minutes. A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous for those present. All right, staff reports. Viva, are you running with this?
Yeah, so at the Board of Supervisors meeting on May 27th, the board considered the application by Abigail Logan for the rezoning of two parcels on the south side of Tinkerville Road. And that was from the General Business Zoning District to the Agriculture and General Uses A2 zoning district. After holding the public hearing, the board approved the application as recommended by the Planning Commission. Additionally, the Board of Supervisors reviewed and held the public hearing on the application by LGCC slash WNL Joint Venture LLC, which was for the expansion of the country club in the R1 zoning district. The board set the matter over to their next meeting on June 9th. Then the application by Cassandra Harding for a private school, essentially a dog training facility in the agricultural and general uses A2 zoning district was discussed. Ms. Harding discussed and presented and discussed the set of conditions she had proposed prior to the meeting, which were alterations to the Planning Commission's recommendations. Prior to opening the public hearing, the board chose to allow additional time to review the requested changes to the recommended conditions and set the matter over to their May 23rd, 2025 meeting. Then at the Board Supervisors meeting on June 9th, the board continued their discussion on the application by LGCC slash WNL Joint Venture LLC. The application was approved with modified conditions and some of the changes that they made to the conditions included all lighting associated with the pickleball court, swimming pool and playground must be turned off 30 minutes after closing, which was set to 9:00 PM. A condition was added pertaining to events that are allowed under the definition of a country club, specifically those that will not fall under the potential future special events, special exception. And that saved that any amplified music not within an enclosed structure must end by 9:00 PM and all outdoor events must be concluded by 10:00 PM. A statement was added that any lighting plan that may be submitted in the future shall be subject to approval by the zoning administrator. And the requirement for sediment testing of streams was removed. One of the chemicals to be tested was corrected from cerium to chromium. And the test results must be made publicly available within 14 days. And the requirement for well testing serum was also corrected to chromium. And it was added that the test results must be available to the landowner and the office of community development within 14 days. Moving on to the Community Development Committee, the committee met on May 19th and discussed the Plas Planning Commission and upcoming Board of Supervisors agenda. Past Planning Commission included the Country Club, LGCC, WNL Joint Venture, the WNL Temporary Driving Range and the expansion of the storage building in a floodway, as well as the upcoming Board of Supervisors agenda, which was just discussed. The next community development meeting will be held on Monday, June 16th. And there was no BZA nor TCO meeting during the prior month.
Thank you, Viva. Okay, our first item on the agenda is Jake and Brenna Tomlin, public hearing, application for a special exception permit to develop and operate a commercial kennel in the Agricultural Transitional AT zoning district. Staff and applicants will make presentations.
Bear with me while I pull this up here.
Oh my goodness.
Bear with us for just one moment while we're setting things up. Okay, so this is an application by Jake and Brenna Tomlin. A few more details about the property, the property under consideration consists of 22.93 acres per tax level. The property is located on the southwest side of East Midland Trail, shown on the map here. And so this shows a little bit of the zoning in the area. You can see that we have the AT zoning district, which is what the property is located in, which is shown in pink. It's surrounded by both the R1 General Residential in the yellow and Business District, which is General Business District B1, which is in the red. And it's about a third of a mile outside of the city of Venus, which is shown kind of in the white in the bottom corner there. So per section 302.116 of Land Development Regulations, a kennel is defined as any location where raising, grooming, caring for or boarding of dogs, cats or other small animals for commercial purposes is carried on. So this application, the per the Land Development Regulations, commercial kennels are used by special exception in the AT zoning district. The, there's an existing structure on the property that is proposed to be utilized for housing indoor kennels and additional outdoor kennels will be also built. The applicant has requested the permit to include up to six females and two males, which will include room for growth. The idea would be to start at a smaller size. And the request to dog breeding include German Shepherd and German short haired pointer. So these are images of the facilities that were submitted by the applicant. He can explain a little bit more about, more details about that. And then looking at conditions that could be utilized, we have substantial compliance with the application and narrative. The breed that should be limited to the number of female and male dogs. Prohibition of boarding and grooming operations and then compliance with the general lighting requirements and general design requirements of the Rockbridge County Land Development Regulations. But the same, I'll invite the applicant Jake Tomlin to come forward to explain a little bit more about the application.
Good, how are you?
Good. Um, I don't know if this is the time to make a correction to that. I had it in my letter. But I was applied for six female German short haired pointers and two males with the future plan of growing to German Shepherds with the capabilities of having one male and two females. That was stating just six females and two males. That referred to the German short haired pointers. Also, I've stated that I could fit 11 kennels in that 1500 square foot wall on the property.
My apologies for misunderstanding.
That's okay. I shouldn't want to get hit that heavy up in the future.
The totals are eight and eight and well, eventually.
I'm sorry, sir, I couldn't hear you.
The totals, the totals would be?
Yes, the total.
Eight and three.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir. So I, I've always had a love for dogs. I grew up loving dogs, had plenty of dogs. My mom actually had a, which I didn't realize as a child, I was just informed the other day, but she had a Pekingese breeding business in the state of Mississippi. So when I was talking to her about my dad, he made the comment, he's like, you're just, you know, you're just like your mother wanting a breeding business for dogs. My mom passed away in 2011, and so I didn't, you know, have the opportunity to talk to her about that, but I just thought that was interesting that without communication, I still have the same desires. Working alongside Chris Wade on the same shift as him over the past two and a half years, the, the passion for a working dog and the service that they provide to the United States has also just become overwhelming to me that I'm like, I have to do something about this passion. I've thrown my name into the hat to work a dog at the sheriff's office. That is up to them to whether I get that position or not. Speaking with my wife, I was like, you know, I would love to, to breed dogs and working alongside Venusa. They have a German short haired pointer, started doing ample amount of research into this dog. And here in the United States, I've over contacting 20 plus people have had only one person respond to me on being able to even buy a dog from them. So I'm like, we have a, we have a need for the, the dog in the United States. We keep giving our business to other countries and, you know, which I don't mind. They raise phenomenal dogs across seas, but I want to be able to start something special here in the Rockbridge County Lexington area. So that what, that's what drove me to, to present this opportunity to the county and go from there. The plan is, I know we were talking about it a little bit before, let's just start with one dog. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna buy a female and you're like, okay, well, how do we get to the breeding process with just one female? I'm gonna, I'm gonna pay for a stud and use somebody else's male that's AKC registered, so I don't have to bring on two, two dogs right away. It keeps the cost down. I just have to pay them a fee for the breeding aspect of it. And then once I sell my puppies, we'll go from there on buying a male to add or buying another female and using a stud from somebody else.
Start small.
Yes.
It's always a good idea, yeah, yeah. All right, is that your presentation?
Yes.
All right, this, before we close the, prior to opening the public hearing, yes, let's, let's ask questions of Jake.
You know, I I can hear him roll the rants.
Personally, we might as well put in the max number of dogs to, you know, leave the decision up to the gentleman about how he progresses from
Agreed.
one dog and two. And my standpoint on the kennels, I don't know why we limit it to any breed. I mean, if something comes up and it wasn't one of these two dogs, what do you do? You'd have to come in here and
Pay another $300.
Yeah, and, you know, I think that's a waste of your time and a waste of our time. And I'd like to just take the dog breeds out and, you know, if he can sell a mutt, you can sell a mutt.
I think the intent might have been to, if someone said, I want to breed pit bulls and Spencer, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt, but some dogs are a lot louder than others. And, you know, hounds in certain cases, and that would be my guess as to one of the reasons, and yours might be, but would we ever?
Blue tick hounds or something.
Would we ever not let somebody do that because of it? Or would they have to be in a certain location, you know, very, very far away from? This is in the middle of 22 acre property and then? No, I'm not talking about this one. I'm just saying, I, I agree, I agree. I'm just supporting the fact is I don't, we've been through this a couple of times and wondering why we're limiting to the breed. And then if we had a case where somebody came back and wanted to change one of the breeds and it wasn't to any of those.
Jake, could you ever foresee other dogs?
So I did think about that before I came in here, the Belgian Mal would be the only other one. And I didn't include that in here for the sole purpose is I don't know when, but again, I don't know when any other dogs are going to come. I have one in the works right now. In regards to hounds, absolutely not. I have two of them now and they're about to death up. But in reference to them barking, I have a kennel on the backside of my home, which would be a little bit more east of where the house is located. And when I'm standing on the other side of it, I have a tree walker hound dog and I can barely hear him bark because of the structure being in the way. There's trees around him and the structure there, I'm like, is that my dog barking or is somebody else's dog on my property? Because I just can't locate where it's even coming from. But I understand when you add one, two, three, four more dogs that it gets a lot louder. The only other dog that I can see adding right now would be a black bear.
I was not specifying that your property per se, I'm just saying that's in the middle of 22 acres. I was trying to answer the question of why would you limit it to breeds? And I think one of the things that you would want to think about is if you got a two or three acre parcel and you're putting hounds in that.
I can see that, yeah.
And just from a legal point of view, it's thing, the purpose of putting, because this is a special exception and a right that is granted by special exception, we do have the legal right to limit to certain, certain breeds. So there's no legal exception in that. And it might be that in certain property, there's no need to limit, it might be at another property that there might be reasons for which to limit it. So it's up to the commission to make the decisions of what, whether to recommend or not.
Or just add the third dog?
How does that, third dog?
I think I'd add the third dog.
I mean, I, I did, looking at this and there are other dogs on the Belgian Mal in between there that would be considered for police dogs as well, before you even get to the German short haired.
Any other?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I just, I said, I just.
I would say with him starting out and getting a feel for everything, putting the three dogs in there, I doubt we'll see him again. But that's up to the applicant really. I mean, if that's the three that you have the passion to do.
I mean, if we're going to broaden to what's used for service, a lab is also.
Yes. Yeah, that opens it up, when you do service, it opens it up vaguely to a lot of different breeds.
Well, again, should we throw in two more breeds or Bob's, you still think we ought to just let him do whatever?
I, I mean, I think it's a noble cause. I, I think it's great that somebody would commit to that, but, you know, it's, to me, it's just red tape. It's, we're asking for something that if it happens down the road, it's an inconvenience for everybody. I mean, a business person got to adapt and maybe that's how we look at it.
All right, on the flip side of that, Bob, if he was standing here saying, I want all blue tick hounds and pit bulls, there's a little bit of protection for the county from specifying at least service dogs or whatever. I don't even, actually, I don't know that I need to limit him to service dogs.
Well, I'd like to point out, I mean, I, this isn't a scientific study, but we don't have animal control checking on any of these kennels. Somebody, you can correct me, counselor or whatever, I, I don't know anybody that's checking on this.
And, and this is a zoning procedure, so the zoning administrator would only get involved if there was a zoning complaint by neighbors or others. Yeah, so it's, so as far as we, we wouldn't even be involved if, if we even had the capacity to have it checked by, that would be a criminal issue or other issues.
Why don't we, Jake has made his opinion now, why don't we hold that till we fill in the condition report and we'll have another discussion on that just amongst us? Want to do it that way or you want to agree on it now?
Yeah, they opened up the hearing and public hearing.
I like the, I mean, I got some other things.
Let's keep moving, okay.
And as a reminder, the conditions, the special exception does run with the land, so any future landowner could also pick this up.
Correct, does run with the land, so that would be a good reason.
Unlimited, yeah.
That would be a good reason to limit it to service dogs, but even if it's five or six or seven, you know, but.
Instead of the word, I guess, service dog, because
Yeah, I might be using the wrong word.
We just add the two breeds and I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Okay.
That, that would be phenomenal and if we can move on as long as y'all are in agreement.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, okay.
Well, the other breed you were wanting, the lab, the lab and the Belgian Mal.
Lab and the Belgian Mal?
If we just add those two, I
Experts, excellent.
I just want to say, I mean, I saw in your thing, you're servicing the army, thank you, and you're now service to the county, that's and it looks like you're looking to do some more service here with this. Hopefully we get through this. They have a question, you're, the Emerald Lane, I didn't drive up the lane, but obviously I went by it and is that just access your property or does other people use, there's other houses on that?
There's, there's one other house. It's at 61, I believe is the correct address for it, 61 Emerald Lane. There, the driveway is roughly a quarter mile long. And there may be a third of the way up into the left and then maybe like another 16th of a mile.
How far are you up, if there are?
Quarter of a mile all the way up and I'm at the very top. Like my driveway, it's, it's pretty much the whole lane.
Okay.
And then they cut off.
So people using, if they had some customers coming in, they would drive that lane past other people's houses?
Yes, but you can't see the, from that person's house, I don't know if you could see the light.
There's a map there, package that shows them.
You know, I did have, I did have a question.
Noticed the other driveway.
I had a question for staff, does, and this has probably, this is more for you. Does VDOT have anything to say when it becomes a, a quote, business on the property?
I don't believe so unless it would require a commercial entry, an entry, commercial entrance permit. But I don't know, I don't know what their standards would be for, for how many people would need to travel that driveway.
This would not rise to that, Bobby.
Okay, I just, a concern that I would have for you that somewhere along the line, VDOT doesn't like the fact that, I mean, all those gravel roads that come off there, they're, you know, a lot of people aren't going to expect them to stop and, and turn in there. It's just, it just seems to be a concern. It would go on, but you're just going to breed the dogs, there's no training involved as far as.
The only training that I would be doing is introducing the dogs to, to certain lures and to see what the dog's drive is. So if somebody contacted me and, you know, they looking for a narcotics dog, there's different tests that you can put the dog through. Okay, this dog's going to work out. Getting started out, I was telling him beforehand, if somebody contacts me and wants a GSP for a duck hunting dog, I could see myself selling it to them just for the sole purpose of how many law enforcement agencies are going to contact me when this is my first time doing this? We'll see, it's a risk I'm going to have to take. And so there's different things that I'm going to put, test to put the dogs through, but I'm not going to be running a training business up there for now.
Okay, I just, I didn't know, again, our conditions are for breeding right now only, I don't know if that, that sounds like the training that you're going to do is, is, is pretty minimal in terms of
And, and I, I think I mentioned training in my letter to the county, but I'm going to be taking, if somebody wants one introduced to certain sense, like if, if an agency contacts me and they want to train or be introduced to electronics for a bomb dog or narcotics for narcotics dog, I'm actually have a plan to take them to Fisher'sville. I have a friend up there that is a certified dog trainer for law enforcement and I'd be taking those puppies to Augusta County to do that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, okay.
Now, I, I mean, I, I've looked at the, at the map, I mean, I don't see that there's any, I'll say visual impact to the neighbors. Nothing's going to really look different. There's no view shed impact that I can see.
Nobody can see my house from.
He's really smack in the middle of that piece.
Yeah, I assume that.
The neighbor at 61 Emerald Lane is 252 yards from structure to structure with three different tree lines in the ways. And it would be on, the kennels would be on the opposite side of the barn from, from their structure. And then the house at the corner of Peaceful Hollow and Route 60 is 219 yards away and that is straight uphill. So I mean, they look straight up.
I, that's, yeah, that looks, most of that area is pretty steep there. There's the, there's the, there's like, well, subdivision or something next down the road a little ways, I don't know, had a name to it. I drove up that lane and that's, I don't know how people get out in the winter time. I just, what, just the, I don't don't have any more questions. But I do, one of the things when, when we get to the conditions, I mean, despite the fact that, you know, I think it's a great location for minimizing noise, but I still think we need to address that in the conditions somehow, some way. Also, in the event a dog gets loose, if some, you know, welfare of the dog as well as it gets in some of the neighbors, I think we should address something there. One of the things that I don't think we've done in the past that I think is a consideration is how you're going to handle the waste. Especially when you get to the 12 dog or 11 dog thing. And anyway, so that's, when we get to, after the hearing and all, we get to talk about that.
Proper time to talk about, some of those things would be good to discuss now while we have the applicant here.
You can even have the applicant answer questions after the close of the public hearing if you'd like to.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, I want to hear if anybody else
Okay.
has concerns. That's it for me, thank you.
Okay. Before we open the public hearing, we should discuss the application.
I just thought of something else. You, it sounds like you have your own pets as well.
Yes, sir.
How, I think we addressed that somewhere in the conditions, well, you know, excluding and you know, they're, they're pets. You know, you know, somebody, again, it's going to be all about the potential for a complaint, if someone's complaining.
Could be number three just added on.
Well, that's something else we think we need to consider.
Excluding.
You said with the addition of their current
Are excluding, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a pretty easy one. Okay. So, yeah, we're, we're good discussing, okay. After, okay, okay, we're, we're now going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone physically present? Thank, thank you. We'll, we'll probably get you back up here really quick, but is there anybody physically present who would like to speak? Doesn't look like it. So how about anybody on the phone? Or Zoom?
I am seeing no hands raised at this time.
Okay, all right. Are there any objections from anybody to closing the public hearing? Or would we like the commission to continue the public hearing to the next planning commission meeting between 11th, 2025 at 7:00?
Let's have it closed.
Close.
Close, it's, it's agree, we don't have to vote on that, do we? You just say it's closed, okay. We are closing the public hearing, okay. Okay, now we're going to have a discussion again, so is this a time to talk about those other ideas you got, Tony?
Want to go, you want to, I think we went down the list, I'll interject them where I think they, they might need it. Like number two, I mean, number two, I think we could, we can complete that one if we're going to add lab and.
Absolutely, yep, yep. Yep, is somebody writing here, I didn't have a pen, so you guys are on it, yep.
As far as three, I mean, I would suggest.
Excluding personal pets?
Well, I think there's two things, well, first of all, the limit to the, as far as the, the operation itself. Um, the max you see going is eight, eight, eight and three is the way I see it. Eight, uh, eight male, eight female dogs, three males.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Yeah, for, for the, uh. German shepherds and the, the German short hair pointers, uh, if we add the other breeds in there. I don't know, a couple for each, um, it, you know, if we're, if we're going to put, you know. Put it on paper and we're avoiding coming in here in the future, in the future, um.
I mean, your, your, your concept that you've got approved right now is eleven kennels. So is that what you?
Yeah, that's the point. It's, it is, the application is up to eleven kennels. So it, it would need to be within that.
Which means if you, I mean, as you're building this, you may decide that you want to add, you know.
He might have to come back in five years when he's up to eleven dogs.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I mean, I would suggest we put in eight and eleven, eight and three.
Eight and three. Eight on with eight and three.
Okay, yeah. Sounds good. Why don't we just say at the end of that, which includes visiting stud dogs, but it, it, it excludes personal pets?
Just could, could we, could there be a situation that the, the, a, a stud dog could be used? I mean, a stud dog isn't going to stay there permanently. So I'm not sure that.
We have included stud dogs on other, uh, applications.
Okay, but we need to exclude the puppies.
Which shall.
I think we did that previously.
Stud dogs, but, uh, yeah, you don't want to count his, his, his current dogs on that list. So. Figure out the wording to eight and three and shall include visiting stud dogs, uh.
And exclude puppies. And how many, how many dogs do you have? Your personal dog?
And you might end up with four. So just say, uh, uh, this, this list does not include his personal dogs. Something to that effect.
I said excluding personal pets.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, no boarding or grooming operations, uh, there's going to happen other than the. The dogs that you were talking about and, uh. Lighting requirements, uh, general Rockbridge County. Regulations that everybody has.
And I might have missed it, but the brief that you were adding on number two.
The lab and Belgian Mal.
Mal, Mal Noir. Belgian. And nobody wants to say that in front of speak.
I can't say it. Um, okay, Tony, did you, uh, anybody have any other gentleman down at this end, any other, uh, potential conditions? Tony, you had a, you had a.
Yeah, yeah, I wonder, uh, did you get a chance to look at what?
I, I saw them briefly.
Did you have any legal or otherwise concerns? Cause I'm not, I'm not going to.
The, the only concern I have is the one about the waste, dog waste is whether.
Okay.
Where that's close enough to affiliate attached to the property into the application, given the situation, but it might be. I'm not saying that we can't do that, but that'd be the only one that would raise a concern to me, given that we have no, um, other regulations in the county for that type. We have no ordinance to address that separately either. So other, other than that, I think, and even that one, if you feel strong enough about it, because, yeah, we, I think we could, we could, I could make an argument supporting.
Well, let, let's talk about, let me talk about noise first. Um, I mean, I, I, you know, I realize the location is a good location, all that stuff. Um, I mean, but noise could still potentially be a problem.
Read, read it as you wrote it.
Okay. I wrote, "Commercial breeding operations on the property shall implement measures to minimize noise from dogs, such as maintaining all dogs within a closed kennel or barns during nighttime hours, that's ten to seven. Outdoor dog activity shall be supervised to prevent excessive barking and any noise complaints from the neighbors must be addressed promptly." I mean, because that's where it's going to come back to the county at some point, is if there's.
At night, are the dogs inside at night or not necessarily?
Yeah, the plan would be that they would be inside, they, they'd be utilizing their inside, uh, indoor, outdoor kennels. So in the barn, I plan on cutting holes in it and putting dog doors in, and so they can either go in or out to use the restroom. If they're going to be inside of a kennel, outside, uh, roughly a five by ten, and then they can go right back inside, um, or I can lock them up at night.
Have we had a noise ordinance for any other kennels or, uh, noise that we're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Um.
Legally, I mean.
And again, when, when a noise complaint be warranted, they call the police department anyways.
Well, there, there's two different things is that, yeah, there, if they violate the noise ordinance, which we have in the county, then they could, that would be a, a, a call to the sheriff's office. Um, if we include a condition on noise, then that would be treated as a zoning violation.
Right.
So otherwise we wouldn't treat it. We, we wouldn't be involved in that. So.
Could say compliance with county noise, but that's a given. You don't have to put that in a condition.
Yeah, this, this is more, and the fact is, is that, like, like you're saying is that if there are complaints. And then they could lose their, their special exception.
Uh, yeah, they, then it would be handled as a violation, which would normally be first a letter, then it would be a, a summons, which require an appearance at court with a fine. And after that happens up to, say, five times, then it goes to a misdemeanor, which would then go to the sheriff's department.
That's, so that's, that's. As long as there's no complaints, there's no, no problems.
Yeah. The, the one thing, the, one of the questions, one of the questions you did have is it hasn't, it has not been done yet for kennels. And so, um, while we. Uh, the main aspect is to look at this application with this particular property and determine, and you have the right to impose any conditions you think that are applicable to those areas. Um, you might want to keep in the back of mind a little bit about precedents, and this might be, if you feel this is an important thing, that could be setting in precedents for future, or you might feel uncomfortable.
Yeah, to me, this is not specific to this one. It's, to me, the things that you're going to be concerned about with any kind of kennel is, is the potential for noise.
Yeah. I think the, the only concern from the, speaking for this, on behalf of community development, you might raise that point is that. Generally, given the, how busy the community development is, we don't want to take on more supervised responsibilities that aren't required. So that would be the, the concern would be having to deal with it when otherwise it would be normally dealt with as a criminal matter. But that's not, that's not to restrict you if you feel like that's an important one to add, because that's commissioner, you, this is fully acceptable for you to recommend this month. There's no, that is legally one, uh, uh, acceptable condition.
I, I just, you know, I think the burden needs to be on the, the person that's, that's doing that, that they need to address it. And if they got a dog that's.
Now, yeah, the only point is that, that, that keeping, uh, from the community development staffing question is, you know, it's.
Well, but it would only come back to the staff in the event there was a problem.
Right. And then, but then, then we, then we'd have to get involved with enforcement of it, which is, which is acceptable. That's what we do. But it's also, um, uh, always a matter of keep in mind is to. How would you do that?
Well, I can.
I don't know.
Well, I can speak a little bit to that. Um. First of all, you know, in, in this particular case, you know, you're talking about keeping your dogs indoors, correct? Generally. Um, and, and in another case, if, if there is a. A complaint, if you put that condition in and it passes through the board supervisors and that condition stays, um. The, the fact of the matter is if there is a call at whatever, eleven thirty at night or something, their dogs are barking. It's, you know, it's a zoning violation in that case. So we would be going out there. And, and at that, you know, we've, actually in the office this week, we have one person. So, um.
It's two wouldn't be going out at eleven o'clock at night.
How are we going to verify it?
What's that?
How are we going to verify?
Yeah.
Well, that.
Somebody's going to have to verify other, the, other, otherwise it's, it's one person's wordless. Uh, you know, there can be a recording, that type of thing, but I'm just saying potentially.
They'll call the police first though, wouldn't they?
And he's a cop.
But, but.
So, we, we, I, I didn't want to say that, right? We go to, we go to noise complaints for dogs all the time. It's not in violation of the county ordinance. Dogs are, are not. The, the only thing is that I think there is one code section that a dog has to be barking for thirty minutes nonstop, and it has to be that one dog. It's impossible. You can't be in violation of anything for a dog barking, whether it be eleven o'clock at night, one o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning. It's a dog barking. I'm sorry, you chose where you live. And I understand the county's concern is operating a commercial kennel and y'all allowing that. That's why I didn't want to say anything, but it's, it's not, if that's what we're concerned about in violation of the law. Bear hunting dogs bark all the time and they have twenty, thirty dogs and we have to tell people, tough luck. I'm, I'm sorry, but if you don't like it. Figure something out.
Yeah. Tony, I'd hate to burden him with, if they have the one neighbor who complains all the time, because there's a dog barking that, that it keeps coming back to the zoning office there. That would be a, I see your point. It's protecting the county, but.
The, the difference here, what we're talking about is putting a condition on not putting a piece of county code in. So it's conditioned on this one property. So a, a, a officer goes out, they, they've got the county code, they know what the code is, but they're not going to have a special exception permit in their hand. That's why it would come back to zoning, to staff, because they're not, they're not enforcing that. And they'd be enforcing it, as you say, as best you can anyway. Please shut your dogs up, you know, that, that type.
Yeah.
Difference between the code and the, and the special exception.
All right. Um. Try again. Um, with, um, I guess the, the, again, the other concern, this has to do with the, both for the dogs, but also the neighbors. I, I suggested, uh. Uh. Uh, wait a minute. Um, all dogs shall remain under the direct control or responsibili- responsible, uh, again, this is going to sit, it's going to come back to the same argument, I think. But all dogs shall remain under the direct control of responsible handler when outside the enclosed kennels on the property. This includes keeping dogs on a leash within a secure designated area under the handler's immediate control. I mean, I guess the other, the, the.
Good. I think Jake's pretty much committed to controlling these dogs. So that was in there. I don't see. I don't see a problem with that one. I don't know if it's necessary, because he's committed, committed to doing it.
I don't really see that. I mean, I, I get what you're saying and you're trying to limit and do this, that and the other, but I mean. It'd be like my neighbor's dog, which comes out of here and goes across my yard. It's a German shepherd. I grew up around animals. I'm not afraid of it.
We're not talking, that's not talking about commercial kennel though. That's.
Well, I mean, it's a commercial kennel, but for service animals and there are going to be puppies. And I get it. I mean, we have cows to get out. We have everything else gets out. I mean, I, I don't foresee it needed putting that in there. And if this is what his passion is, is taking care of animals, I don't see putting in all the handcuffs, because we haven't done before.
Handcuffs, that's good.
True.
Well, we haven't had, put it in for any other kennel that's been approved since I've been on the planning commission. And there are a couple of places that, I mean, certainly, uh, where he lives, and I think a new could go off and you wouldn't hear it. Uh, no offense, but yeah, there's some of these kennels, you know, they're, they're pretty close to their neighbor.
Right. If it, if it helps, uh, for noise, I, I shared that the two distances between, uh, my, my house, which is completely wooded, uh, with. Large, uh, trees between my house and Peaceful Hollow, Route sixty, uh, neighbors, two hundred and nineteen yards, Emerald Lane, uh, neighbors, two hundred and fifty-two yards with three different wood lines. Um, the property, uh, off of Ford Road, uh, which I think is owned by Mr. Holland. He said he rents it out, um, it's eight hundred thirteen yards away. And he told me that they had twenty bear dogs and I've never heard one of them bark. I, I didn't even know. When I went to him the other day, uh, he said, you don't worry about my cows and I don't worry about your dogs. Um. To Mr. Holland's contracting there off of Ford Roads, three hundred and ninety-five yards, tree lines and, uh, open field. And then, uh, the back of Peaceful Hollow, um, which I think is a. Not a full-time residence. I think it's just a vacation home back there. It's five hundred and fifty-eight yards and completely wooded between my house. And, uh, that structure, from as much research as I could do, um, a couple hundred yards is as far as you can hear a dog bark. I understand we're talking about multiple dogs, but I haven't heard any of my neighbor, neighbors' dogs bark before. Um, and there's twenty something dogs, just eight hundred yards away.
It is a great sight. Yeah, yeah. Um, I, I would hate to burden the staff, you know, it sounds, sounds like.
But it's funny, I'm hearing about burdening the staff and I'm hearing how it's never going to be a problem. You don't burn the staff, it's not a problem.
I mean, that's a good point, but if it does happen, it will burden the staff.
We can move on.
You sure?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Um, Tony, what else you got on that list?
That's it.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you again.
Yeah.
Hi.
Yeah. Okay. I guess this is motion time, I think. Is that right? Yep. If the, uh, we've closed the hearing, uh, would any commission member like to make a motion at this time?
I make a motion to recommend to the board of supervisors that the application for a special exception permit to develop and operate a commercial kennel in the agricultural transition zoning district be approved with the following conditions. One, substantial compliance with the application and narrative dated May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five for tax map parcel eighty-nine dash eight dash nineteen A on approximately twenty-two point nine three acres per tax record. Description of the plan for development of the proposed kennel. Two, breeding shall be limited to German short hair pointers, German shepherds, labs and Belgian malts. Three, limited to eight female dogs and three male dogs, which shall include visiting studs and we're going to exclude their personal pets. Uh, four, boarding and grooming operations shall be prohibited. And five, compliance with section thirteen oh three dash zero three general lighting requirements and section thirteen oh three dash zero four. General design requirements of the county of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations.
In a second. Uh, we have a motion by Adam Sanderson, a second by Bob Kramer. At this time, I'll call for a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. The motion carries unanimous. Um. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Very well.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for your patience out there. The, the next item on the agenda is, is, uh, Michael D. Godfrey and Lori Ann Lamper. Uh, public hearing, uh, application for a special exception permit to develop and operate a bed and breakfast homestay in the residential general R one zoning district. Eva.
Okay, so as stated, this application is for a bed and breakfast homestay in the R one zoning district. Uh, the property under consideration is owned by Lori Ann Lamper and Michael Godfrey. The property consists of, uh, one point three five acres per tax records and is located on the south side of Mari River Road. Little hard to see on this map, but it's essentially this, uh, corner area here. The zoning, um, of this parcel is R one. To the rear, um, there is AT zoning district. And, um, to the front, there is additional R one zoning district. The, um, the purple on the map is the planned business zoning district. On March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, the board of supervisors approved a rezoning request for the two larger parcels, uh, owned by the, um, the applicants. Though that rezoned them from the R one zoning district to the AT zoning district. The, the property adjoining a parcel that is owned by the Virginia Core Center to the west. Per section three oh two point two four, the land development regulations, a bed and breakfast homestay is defined as a short-term rental where overnight accommodations plus breakfast in a private owner occupied home that provides one to three guest rooms for occasional bed and breakfast guests. Primary use of the home remains as a residence, not as a lodging establishment. Signs are generally not displayed on the property and all reservations are made in advance. Income derived from the bed and breakfast activity is a source of supplemental income and does not usually represent a primary source of income. Per section six oh four, uh, point oh three dash one of the land development regulations, a bed and breakfast homestay is a use by special exception in the R one zoning district. Uh, the applicants, um, per the description on the application, the applicants live full-time in the. Per the description on the application, the applicants live full-time in the main area of the residence. Um, the application applies to, uh, rental of the two one-bedroom suites that are attached to the main house with a separate entrance. And, uh, included were, um, pictures of the, um, the house and the, um, the suite that will be rented. So this time, I'll invite the applicants to come forward to give, uh, further description on that.
Thank you, Viveka.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I think ours is pretty simple. We have a five-bedroom, four-and-a-half bathroom home, and it's just my husband and I. Um, the other two parcels that were rezoned is because I breed horses, so I was kind of laughing about the number of, uh, dogs that he was discussing, because. I'm, I'm at my limit with horses, my own limit, um. But, um, but really, we're just looking to, I mean, I'm involved with the horse center, obviously, with the horses. I volunteer over there, and I just wanted to. Basically, um, cater to folks who are coming in to compete. Um, and obviously, we'll get some of the university weekends and stuff like that, too, but it seems a waste to waste the house.
You like your barn?
Thank you so much. Y'all are welcome to visit.
I drove by, I drove by just to see it, because Dix is a good builder, so it's good.
Yes, they've been phenomenal.
The wit did it?
Yeah.
The wit's a good fellow. Hey, you're never going to rent the whole house out like a VRBO kind of thing. It's, and this application is just for the two bedrooms.
Correct, under the definition of a bed and breakfast, it'd only be one to three bedrooms.
And we just have those two. It's a, it's, I think it was originally a garage, and they converted the bottom and the, and the attic into two very nice bedroom suites. Each have a bedroom, and it. Both are off of the mudroom, and then we have a door that we added to, um, the rest of the house. It goes into the kitchen, and we have a code lock on that, and we have cameras in the house, so. Because we're kind of partial to folks, uninvited guests in the house are not allowed, so.
Okay. Anything else?
That was that simple.
I have a question for staff. This, um, we've not been given any conditions, and this will be a first. Under my tenure, where we've had an unconditional, a potential for unconditional, uh, approval, um. Is there, is previous homes, uh, bed and breakfast homestays, has there been conditions and?
The, um, at the, the applications that I looked at, which there were five of them within the last essentially six years, uh, none of them had a conditions associated with them.
I mean, with it being the home place and.
Yep.
Them intending to stay in and not rent the whole house out.
Very straightforward.
It's pretty straightforward.
And the definition of a bed and breakfast homestay itself is pretty restrictive of owner-occupied and one to three bedrooms.
Yeah, and, and basically, I mean, the. We're going to use Airbnb, and that allows us to block off when we're on vacation and stuff like that, so we have zero interest in renting out our portion of the.
Yeah, I just was curious, but we were talking about precedent between the, the previous one. This is unprecedented for me. There's no conditions, and I don't have anything to add, so.
Yeah, and you don't need to put that in writing about not renting out the house, because that's the standard that we.
Right.
Get their health to.
That's the definition.
The definition, and the definition, okay.
We, we actually discussed it, Viveka and I, when she, she was going through it, and I said, "Yeah, that is strange," and then all of them, none of them had any conditions, and I thought the only condition anybody could possibly add. To me would be maybe limiting the number of off-street parking, and this is way off street.
Set back on that curb.
You know, uh, that was the only thing I could think of that's not already covered.
We could put compliance with the general lighting requirements, um.
Just to have it in there, okay. Alright, uh, thank you very much, um. Everybody good? Okay, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone physically present who would like to speak? I don't think there is. How about on phone or computer?
Um. Let me get back. Uh, no one with their hand raised.
Okay, any objections to closing the public hearing? We're going to close it. Any further discussion amongst us?
That's beautiful.
Okay. Uh, no additional discussion. Here we go.
Can I do it? No, can I do it?
Okay, uh, the public hearing is closed. Um, do we, uh, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make that. I make a motion to, uh, recommend to the board of supervisors to approve this special exception permit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Anthony Sabrezy and a second by Bob Kramer. This time, I'll call for a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. We have no nays. The vote is unanimous. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, I've got to go back. Before we adjourn, uh, we did approve the meeting, so we have a motion to adjourn.
Well, does you have anything on line, Oliver? Do you have anything else for discussion?
I don't have anything else for discussion tonight. Thank you for bearing with me as we're.
Thank you, yeah.
Accolades.
Thank you.
Vivek has, Viveka has been knocking it out of the park.
She's killing it.
And Spencer, thank you, and John, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Great job, Mr.
Vivek, I'm serious. Unbelievable job. Thank you, Pam, for coming, just for the fun of it.
You tell Chris I like the PowerPoint better.
It is.
This is, this was not interrupt.